We certainly have a lot to be grateful for as a city and as a nation. And I'm thankful for the ways that you have just uniquely shaped each leader here, for the ways that you've called and gifted them to serve other people and serve our city. And God, we just acknowledge that leadership is difficult, no matter what we're leading. But I certainly am thankful for a group of leaders here that lead well. God, I'm grateful for their forward-thinking vision and wisdom that you have guided our city leadership through despite just even unprecedented, unique challenges of this past year. And I pray that today, God, you would give each leader here energy, focus, clarity, creativity, stamina, and wisdom in every decision and in all discussions. God, I pray that even in the middle of diverse opinions and thoughts, that you would just continue to guide them toward unity. God, I prayed for your hand in every discussion in this room today. And it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sean. We appreciate that very much. We do have one proclamation today, and it is Public Service Recognition Week. Councilmember Frida Powell is going to read that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. It is such an honor and a privilege to be able to read this particular proclamation today. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Their fearless efforts and especially critical are critical today during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas many public servants risk their lives each day in service to the people of our communities, as well as provide safety inspections, operate our public facilities, and provide the diverse service demand by the American people with integrity and efficiency. Whereas, public servants provide the institutional knowledge, experience, and continuity that supports the long-term sustainability of our community assets and organizational history. And whereas, without these public servants, every level continuity would be impossible in democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, we Mayor and City Council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through the 7th, 2021, as Public Service Recognition Week in Amarillo, and encourage all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Given under our hands and seal of office this 27th day of April, 2021, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Dr. Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And I just want to especially say to our city staff, as well as all of the employees throughout our city, how much I appreciate you all and how much I really appreciate your service that you give to us on a day-to-day basis and also in protecting our city. I thank you so much from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Councilmember Powell. Any words from staff members?
I think we have Mitch Norman, who is the Director of our Human Resources Department to accept the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. On behalf of all the employees of the city of Amarillo, thank you very much for this proclamation and your expression of appreciation for all the service and hard work of the city employees. I'm sure it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Councilmember Powell. I thought you did an excellent job expressing all our hearts from the council all the way down to citizens, what these folks do for us. Some of them work weekends, some of them work nights, but the city works 24/7. It never sleeps, and that's definitely a component of the public servants who serve in city staff positions. So we do appreciate all of you very much. Thank you, Mitch. We do not have anyone signed up to do public address today, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 1A. Was there anything in your packet, Council, that you wanted to ask a question on or get clarification on right at the beginning of the meeting? Okay.
Mayor, I know that we... I had a question from a council member about Item E on consent. It's the 4.182 million-dollar grant, immunization grant. And I just wanted to give you all a little more information about that before we get to consent, because I know that might be something that people would want to hear about.
Sure.
If you don't mind, I will throw it to Casey or Kevin. Kevin Starbuck or Casey Stotin, Director of Public Health. Kevin Starbuck, Deputy City Manager. It's a very large grant that does have an expiration date. So once the money's gone, it'll go back to DSHS. But I want either Kevin or Casey, and I'm going to let you all decide who's going to go there, to give us the details on the grant and answering questions Council has.
So this is a reimbursement grant from DSHS, just like many of our other grants. I think we've got about 15 different grants that we work with DSHS on. So this is another grant that is specific to COVID vaccinations. The expiration date on this is the end of 2024, so the end of the fiscal year 2024. And so it's a more long-term vision for COVID vaccinations. Most of the money is geared toward the contact or temporary staff, so contract staffing. So that is where the bulk of the funding goes. But it also will pay for three... I'm sorry, four additional full-time staff at public health. So we're really excited about this grant. It's a large grant, so one of the largest that we have received, but certainly for a good cause.
And a little clarification to tie in with that is that last week, we obviously presented some of the temporary staffing contracts and the like for City Council's approval on those contracts. And we, at that point, discussed the pursuit of FEMA reimbursement. So we will continue to pursue FEMA reimbursement for the activities that we have done to date. What we're looking at with the public health grant that Casey has received through DSHS is the continuation of those activities beyond the current timeframe. So when we kind of shut down the mass vaccination clinic in the coming months, as we kind of run through that course, we will transition to the public health grant covering the expenses of continuing to provide those options to the public. So we're just looking at different alternatives to cover the costs and the expenses associated with providing vaccinations to the community, certainly wanting to take advantage of the FEMA reimbursement for the mass vaccination portion that we're doing at the Civic Center, and then looking at other alternatives to cover our costs. And Casey was able to secure this grant. It was something that was added as part of the American Recovery Act program that DSHS had for mass vaccination or public health vaccination operations for COVID moving forward. And so she put in that grant, and we were able to secure those funds to cover expenses. As she stated, it is a reimbursement grant, so there is no giving money back per se to DSHS. But what we don't spend, we won't get reimbursed for.
Any questions or follow-up, Council, for Casey or Kevin? Jared, anything else to add?
I think Councilmember Hayes was talking, but I'm not hearing her.
Yeah. Uh-oh.
No, we don't show you mute. That's okay, Elaine. Just let's... We're going to pause for a minute while you work on the issue. Uh-oh. No sound still. You want to try your phone? Okay.
Mayor, Elaine has asked that you go ahead and go on as she works on her audio if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Elaine, any questions you have, we can come back to, for sure. Okay, so let's just swing over to coronavirus update. Jared?
Right. We've got Casey Stotin, Director of Public Health, to give us the update, and then I'll give us just a little bit of information on American Recovery Plan Fund, and then we can answer any questions you've got.
Thank you. Great. So as of today, we have a total of 33,901 total cases of COVID-19 here in Potter and Randall County, 17,275 cases in Potter County, and 16,626 cases in Randall County. We do have a total of 32,803 recoveries, and we have 738 deaths here in our community. We're up to 360 active cases. The seven-day rolling positivity rate is currently at 2%. The positivity rate at the drive-through testing site, which is a subset of the total, is at 15%. And the five-day new case average is at 20 new cases per day. Yesterday, our GA34's hospitalization percentage was at 2.59%, meaning that just over 2.5% of all of the hospitalized patients have COVID-19. While we're still at status level yellow, we're seeing an increase in cases. March 12th was the last date that we had active cases, over 360 active cases. At this time last week, our active cases were at 263. So we've seen an increase of about 100 active cases over the last week. Our community is definitely tired, and pandemics are not easy. I think that's the two lessons that we've learned here recently. So I do want to say thank you. I just want to take a moment and say thank you for your support of public health and the public's health during this incredibly difficult time. Everyone has worked so hard. We're still working hard. Our community's still working hard. There's lots and lots of work to do. So thank you for your support. Thank you to our community for their hard work. I couldn't be more proud of Amarillo. The public health drive-through is still operational. So if an individual needs a test for COVID, they can call 378-6300 to be screened and directed to the test site. Our vaccination clinic is still operational at the Amarillo Civic Center's entrance, too. Today, we will be open until 7:00 PM. For clinic times and other great information, Amarillo Alerts is still the best place to go. So emmerilloalerts.com. Remember, all adults are eligible. So anyone over the age of 16 is eligible for vaccine. At the Civic Center Clinic, anyone over the age of 18 is eligible. To date, Emerald Public Health has given 72,993 first doses and 53,013 second doses, for a total of 126,006 doses given. The FDA, last Friday, or Friday, April 23rd, did lift the pause on the J&amp;J vaccine. So providers are once again able to provide that vaccine. And just a reminder, the Amarillo Public Health Department has been provided the Moderna vaccine, but providers can resume administration of the J&amp;J vaccine. We have finalized plans for the mobile community clinics and are excited to start this week. Beginning this week, the COVID vaccine clinic will be available at the Emerald Civic Center on Monday, Tuesday, Friday, and the first and second Saturdays of each month. On Wednesdays, the vaccine clinic will not be available. Emerald Public Health will still be working, but we won't be doing clinics. And on Thursdays, we'll be out in the community. So this Thursday, coming up on the 29th, we'll be at the Warford Community Center from 1:00 to 6:00 PM, and that's at 1330 Northwest 18th Avenue. The first Thursday of the month at El Alamo, 1502 Cleveland, from 10:00 to 5:00. The second Thursday of the month at East Ridge Baptist Church, 1330 Evergreen, from 10:00 to 5:00. The third Thursday of the month at the Southwest Library there on 45th, from 10:00 to 5:00. And the fourth Thursday of the month, we back at the Warford Clinic, at the Warford Community Center. I almost said the Warford Clinic, but the Warford Community Center from 10:00 to 5:00. And that schedule will remain until otherwise noted. And so again, we're very excited about these upcoming changes and look forward to vaccinating more people closer to their own homes. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, Casey. So we can still go to emmerilloalerts.com for the complete schedule, so we will know each day, you know, where the public department and staff is going to be. Is that correct?
Yes. If, you know, I've got all of those dates and times memorized now just because I kind of live and breathe it. But emmerilloalerts.com is the very best place to go for that information.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Anything else, Council? Questions for Casey? Casey, we appreciate you. Please tell your team how much we appreciate them as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Item 1. See reports and updates from City Council members serving on outside boards. The first report is a beautification of public arts advisory board. Dr. Sauer, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, just a little bit. Actually, we met the last time. Just pretty much are still working on several different things. Really, the best thing to do would be just to kind of get you up to date where we are on the mural grant program. So there were eight that were awarded, and four of those grants are already ready, pretty substantially complete. And there are still four of them that have not started yet. So the one that probably is getting the most notoriety, and hopefully it will continue that way, is the snack pack for kids, that interactive... What is it? A Tyrannosaurus Rex on the back of their building. So that one's... That one has been done. W Marketing. Their building is looking really pretty fantastic, and that's a pretty big one. Cash for Gold on Sixth Street. Theirs is complete. And Dependable Plumbing, which is downtown. And if you have not seen Dependable Plumbing, it is... I don't... I'm not... It really doesn't have an Amarillo flair to it. But the guys that did that, and please forgive me because I don't have it right in front of me, but the ones that did that did a great job. It is very unique, and it's not like across a parking lot. I mean, it's right up next to the street on Third, and it's kind of a pretty cool mural. So that would be one that you'd want to get. And I don't want to steal any of Elaine's thunder when she starts talking about the parks, but I'm just going to make... Say this part of it, that there will be public art at the pool, for sure. And they've already kind of begun that contract, so that's all I've got.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next is a report from the Convention Investors Bureau, and our representative there is Councilmember Hayes. And I'm going to stop for just a moment because this is our last full meeting with Councilmember Hayes, and she has served four years, and she's served on many boards, been liaison to the council for many different special subjects that this council's worked on, and you've just done a fantastic job. And we want to say thank you. We're going to thank you again at the next council meeting after the election. But this is your last full council meeting, and our last full council meeting, the five of us together. So I just wanted to stick a pin in that and pat Elaine on the back and tell her sincerely, I'm thankful for you. But also just to say thank you to this team, because this team won't ever be the same again as the next team picks up the reins to serve the city. So before we take that report from Councilmember Hayes, I just wanted to be intentional about saying that.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, and it has been an honor, truly, truly. And I will save any other comments till next week, but I really appreciate that recognition. The CBB, one of the things that I wanted to pass on, number one, is this is a really strong board. It has so much depth of experience. It is truly a working board. One of the things that we tasked them with was creating a new entity. And as I'm sure the mayor can appreciate, as leading us through the policies and procedures review that we took as a council early on in our tenure, that is what this board has been working on. And they are very close to finishing all those final things. They have been very intentional. They have not rushed through it. They want to be sure that it is done correctly the first time through. And so my commendation to them on that. They have... We finished the Articles of Incorporation. The bylaws are complete, and there's just one final section under the policies that they will be probably finalizing at the next board meeting. One of the things that the new Executive Director, Cassian Smith, I think is just doing a fantastic job. She has my full support. I think she is the perfect bridge to this new entity between the hoteliers, the attractions, and the city and the board. And it's truly doing a lot with a little right now. And one of the things that she and her team have put together is a strategic plan. And I know at least in the last eight years, there has not been a strategic plan. And so a one-year, two-year, five-year plan with not just goals, but the goals and the methods, you know, the steps. What are we going to have to do to take and actually accomplish those goals? The, you know, as I've certainly learned, which I did not know prior to serving on the council, is what a strong, large economic impact tourism is to our community. And in 2019, those numbers, and tourism contributed over $920 million in direct spending. Obviously, last year with COVID, that number is down. But we are already outpacing this year, those 2019 numbers. So it is looking like it is going to be a very strong economic year. And the tourism industry supports over 9,000 local jobs. So it is something very vital to our local economy. Our sales tax collections, our hotel occupancy tax collections that we need to recognize and continue to invest in. One apart, a huge step in this strategic plan that has been a discussion of this board and the previous board for years is how do we increase traveler stays? Instead of us being a one-night stay, a two-night stay, three-night stay would increase those economic numbers significantly. Right now, we are currently, on average, visitors to our city stay 1.7 nights, and the goal is to move that to a two-plus. And to move us truly from a pass-through to a destination location. One of the key factors in that is letting visitors know what activities and events there are to do here in our community. And something that Cassian and her team have been able to put together is the first co-op between our hoteliers and attractions for extended packages. And they are going to be marketing those through... One of the apps that they use as an organization is Bandwango to help promote those packages, to do the marketing. It also provides a way, they are sending the hoteliers for their front desk to have that digital visitor guide of when people ask you, you know, what's there to do in Amarillo? For them to have that information at their fingertips, because we have a ton of activities and special interesting people who are interested in Western heritage, in architecture, in food, restaurant, all specific packages. And so I think those are... This co-op has a huge potential to really reach that goal of making Amarillo a destination stop and not that pass-through. I know Cassian's going to be presenting that strategic plan once it is all finalized, all the T's crossed, I's dotted. Well, coming back before council, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up to be looking forward towards that. I think it is very significant, a big change in how this board is approaching the needs, the goals. And as I said before, they are doing a lot with a very little right now. And I just anticipate the impact of our local CBB to only increase over the next decade. And that's the end of my report.
Wow, that was a humdinger. That's a great report. Well done. Any questions for Elaine? It's very exciting. I know, you know, if you don't have a plan, it's hard to know if you've ever met your destination or met your full potential. So I'm very excited about hearing the work that that team's been putting into making an intentional plan. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Elaine. The Parks and Rec Board?
It's me again. Thank you. You know, one of the things that we have seen as a council over the last four years is certainly through the Asset Management Plan, the Master Park Plan, is the recognition that our needs are greater than our current budget. And part of our tasking, the Parks and Rec Board and also that staff department, is being creative, looking for, setting those priorities, figuring out how we are going to pursue meeting those needs. And there are... I just really want to compliment their pursuit of looking outside the box and beginning to try and figure out alternate funding, revenue options, and public-private partnerships. Right now, the board has been... They are doing their homework. They are doing legal research. They are visiting with other cities, comparing Amarillo with other cities, and looking at a private funding source and putting together the steps required to have a 501(c)(3) or an entity where we could actually do private fundraising to meet some of the needs. So like, there will be an interest, there is an appetite among certain individuals and our... and groups in our community that want to see our parks improved, and this would be a way to onboard them, bring them in. Also, there are conversations going on that I can't disclose at this point, but some public-private partnerships of looking for ways to partner together with other agencies, entities, and private, public, other organizations to be able to put all of our efforts together and try and leverage what we are doing for our community. One of those has been that there are 15 miles of trail being developed in our city by a private organization outside of city staff to design it, lay it out, maintain it. And that's exciting to me, to see us reaching outside, just looking at the city government to meet all those needs and building those relationships and partnerships that have an interest in this area. One of the things, we as a council, it ended up not being the largest issue that we had to tackle over our four years. but certainly one of the largest and one of the first, and that was dealing with our golf department. And we made some really tough decisions in that time. At the beginning, we were looking at almost a $2 million subsidy in that program during that first budget review that we worked on. Currently, right now, the projection for this year is that it's going to drop below $1 million, maybe in the 800,000 to 900,000 range. So I think that is, the Parks and Rec Department is to be commended for that, our city manager is to be commended for that, and our golf task force that works with that, and some of the recommendations that they came up with. And one has, were those annual passes and shifting those to monthly instead of just a one-time pass, increasing the marketing budget and activities. Also, the Happy Hour program has been very, very popular of just one-time purchases for end-of-day, just the $15 individual, $30 for a family. That program has been incredibly successful. And all of that, I don't know if y'all remember, and part of those conversations early was just the number of rounds of golf, how it was declining over time. And it wasn't just locally, but that's been a national trend. And it was a concern of the sport in itself as well as what was going on locally. And that first year, the 2018, 2019, the rounds for the whole year were 66,600. Right now, we are over 30,000 just through April. So the number of rounds has been increasing significantly along with the price changes that we enacted in that department to make it more competitive and closer cost recovery on the pricing of the rounds. So those are two good financial combinations. More rounds at a higher dollar purchase price. That is helping us close that gap on those subsidies. And before I forget, I do want to just mention that even part of our contribution as a city, when we are subsidizing that, it also helps towards the different charity fundraisers that are held at our public golf courses. And I believe that in 1819, it was over 820,000 that was raised for donations and charity nonprofit organizations. And so far, I think that this year, it's 87,000, almost 88,000. So we're on track to rebuilding those things. And it's a major part of how the city invests and pays forward into our different nonprofit organizations. The other things I wanted to highlight, so those are, I think, some of the very positive things going on. So now, a little bit of the reality on some of the needs and the finances. And y'all may recall when Michael brought before us, you know, one of the issues, when we had a transformer that was replaced and then due to safety concerns, we could not reconnect the lighting in those parks. Then John Steph went offline for nighttime activities and events. We are looking at, and they're still off, and we have not been able to reallocate dollars out of our budget to have those dollars turned on. And so all those assets go offline once the sun goes down. And also any revenues that come in from using those facilities. So as the next council begins looking at next year's budget, I just want to highlight, there are two very significant, from my position, sitting as part of this committee for the last few months, there are two things that really jumped out at me and the lighting issues around our city are huge. Once those go off, then again, all those assets go offline. Once the sun goes down, our community can no longer use it. One of the areas we are looking to do is more cost recovery, revenue generation. And those parks also generate a lot of revenue and a lot of dollars. And so it will cost us anywhere from 250,000 to 750,000 on some of those parks to replace those lights. But at the same time, the revenues that we will be protecting help minimize some of the costs that will be associated with that. The second area is just the safety issues that with the, some of the park equipment. As we get more recommendations back from the consultants on helping prioritize the highest safety risk, the highest community interest areas, I know that's something that's going to come back before the city council and I just want to be giving you a heads up on that. Because, you know, one of the things with the Master Park Plan, the asset plan, we'd love to be focusing more on some of the big picture goals and visions, what we'd like to see our Parks Department, five years down the road, 10 years down the road. We have to acknowledge that right now, probably 75% is going to have to be focused on just our current challenges. Some of those basics, getting our lights turned back on as those transformers begin to be replaced throughout the city on a regular basis and we cannot reconnect without upgrading our lighting. That's going to be a current high priority need. And, you know, maybe 25% being able to focus really on those future goals and concepts. It's the short-term, long-term reality. Some of those other things I mentioned at the beginning hopefully will be things that we help address some of the longer-term needs. But that, those priorities, and in this next budgeting session, I hope that those will be set at a high priority. And then the last positive, exciting thing I want to end on out of the Parks and Rec Department is the staff is very interested in focusing on community activities, engagement, festivals, using our public park system for events, not just for our local citizens, but it's also another huge tie-in to our tourism and CBB. It definitely is, you know, deals with two birds with one stone. We have those events and festivals that it helps us financially, locally and with tourism. One of the ideas they have there, putting together a package of festival this fall for Oktoberfest. I'm sure you will be hearing more details along that. But they are, it's a very enthusiastic group, energetic group. They're looking outside the box. They are truly seeking cost recovery, revenue generation, but also use of our parks, community engagement to be sure that we are providing what our community wants and even going above and beyond that with just creative ideas and methods. And I'll stop there.
Mayor, before we jump away from the Parks Board update, another thing that we can look forward to as a council, we've had a lot of bad weather over the course of the winter, but we've been working really productively with our construction company that's working on Thompson Park Pool. So we're still aggressively working towards what was already a tight timeframe to be able to get the pool open at the date that we said we were going to get it open, which was Memorial Day is what we were shooting for. We will have a very detailed report on the next council, at the next council meeting. So the council will have a detailed update on what's going on there, steps we're taking to be able to hit the date. And weather permitting, we're going to make sure that we are doing our very dead level best to get there. But we want you to have all the information on what we're projecting as far as opening date. But we also want to let you know that we're working really aggressively to make sure that we hit that date. And then be ready to answer any questions you have. We know by, in a couple of weeks' time, we should have a really good handle on what the opening date looks like. And so I just want to, while I can't say definitively, I just want to say that we're working really hard with our partners, our construction company, to hit that. And as we all know, we have a lot of weather challenges, but I think they're doing a good job getting through it and making sure that we can either hit it or be as close as possible to it. None of that is laying the groundwork. I just want you to have an eyes-open approach to what we're dealing with and steps we're taking to mitigate the challenges from the weather this winter.
And Mayor, there was only one other point that I wanted to add is just the next round of public engagement for the Parks Department is going to be coming up mid to late May. And so that will be really important time for our community to be weighing in and giving feedback to our department to know the direction and what the priorities need to be. And as you mentioned earlier, if you don't have a target, you can't reach it. And we need the community's feedback to be sure that we are holding up the right target.
Great. That's very good information. Counsel, do y'all have any questions for Elaine or for Jared about Thompson Park? A lot of good information, probably something we just need to get, work on getting Michael and his team, bring us an update, which I guess we'll get that actually as budget comes around. It's going to come a little sooner than we typically see it.
Well, and we'll also have a detailed update, well, just on Thompson Park progress, the pool progress on the 11th.
Okay, okay. Great. Anybody else have questions on Parks and Rec? I wanted to scoot back on coronavirus. I think there might have been a point. We are changing our meetings. The city council will go back to in-person meetings on May 11th. Jared, will you just walk us through again the explanation on why we've been meeting virtually? Why we haven't been meeting at a different, larger location and why it's okay now, you believe, to meet in person?
Yes, ma'am. From the very start, we went asked, when do we foresee or project, going back to in-person meetings? We have always tied that to a reasonable period where everyone who wants to get vaccinated can get vaccinated. The reason we have picked May 11th is not, has nothing to do, I've had people ask me, does that have to do with the election? It has nothing to do with the election. When, from the date that the state of Texas made vaccine available to all residents, four weeks, you move forward four weeks from that date and then to get the second dose, and then another two weeks from that date to have full efficacy. And that assumes that everyone got that vaccine on the very first possible day that everybody in the state could. Then that gets us to full effectiveness of that vaccine on May 10th. So if you work it backwards, you can get back to the date where it was made eligible for all residents in Texas. Up to that point, none of our staff, or most of our staff wasn't eligible because they did not fit, without me knowing their medical conditions, they did not fit within the criteria. So everyone working on the council meeting from the staff side, up until a short time before that, many members of our council weren't eligible. And we have no idea what the eligibility status is of the guests that would come to the meetings. So we wanted to make sure that our citizens who would come to meetings, that our staff that are staffing the meetings and that are council, that are making these important decisions on behalf of the city, had a reasonable opportunity to be vaccinated prior to going back to in-person meetings. We have met that standard now and that's why we're moving back to in-person meetings. So I'm recommending we move back to in-person meetings.
Any questions about that, counsel? So this is it. This is our last Zoom meeting.
And it is a topic that's being discussed at the legislature. It is still a tool in tool belt. And if there's, for whatever reason, a perfect reason why we might need to use it at some point in the future, that's a possibility that the legislature is considering. They have seen how effective virtual meetings can be. But we've all commented at one time or another, or many times, how much we look forward to getting back to in-person. So I know that's something that councils wanted to do as quickly as we can safely and responsibly do so. So that's why we're moving in that direction now.
Thank you, Jared. Okay, moving on to Agenda 1D, which is a discussion on illegal dumping. Jared?
Right, a lot of good things going on in alley cleanup and steps to mitigate illegal dumping. So to give us the illegal dumping update, we have Donnie Hooper, Director of Public Works. Donnie?
Thanks so much and a good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, counsel. We're back here to talk about one of our favorite subjects, illegal dumping, something certainly that affects each and every one of us. I know that it does, our citizens, it affects us as city employees. And, you know, I want to say, just to start off, we've had a lot of support from this council too when it comes to illegal dumping activities and the things that we've been trying to accomplish over the past several months. So thanks for that. Now, there's really two kinds of illegal dumping activities that we deal with the most. Number one would be the normal homeowner or renter who doesn't really know that it's illegal to dump anything next to your dumpster. They've seen it before in other areas or maybe in another community that they lived in and they've maybe experienced it in their own alley. So they just think it's okay to go ahead and place that mattress or that chair next to their dumpster. Number two would be those who don't want to pay for any type of disposal fees. They know that it's illegal, but yet they drive around, they find a good spot to place their items and dump them and run. So those are the two things that we deal with the most. Back to number one, I think I've realized in talking to some people just over the past few weeks, because I asked them when we get a complaint about it, did you know that this wasn't, that this was illegal? And they say, no, I really did not know that. So I feel like education is really the key to that. We're going to be presenting a video to you here in just a moment and I'll talk a little bit more about that later when we get to it. But one of the goals that I've had since becoming Public Works Director is to put some items out there more educational about what we do and why we do it. In reference to the second item, the people that know that it's illegal and continue to do it are on our priority list as well. As we've told counsel before, we have created an illegal dumping task force where we've begun to place camera placements at a couple of locations in town. There's more of those that are going to be coming soon. I am happy to report that we do have our first case now that has been filed in municipal court from an illegal dumping event that was captured last Thursday with one of those cameras. So it happened pretty quick. Once we got them up, we hope to have more of those as we begin to enhance that program. I also have to report too that we've been awarded a grant from PRPC. This is from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee that meets and distributes solid waste grants for improvements in communities. That grant was just a little over $30,000 for the purchase of some more cameras that would be added to our system as we go. And we just found out last week that that's finally went through the full process through TCU and their review and we have been awarded that grant. So happy about that. We're in the process of ordering some more of those cameras now. Electronics are a little bit difficult to come by right now, but we're in that process and moving forward with that. So anyway, today, as part of a series of videos, back to the educational portion, we're creating a series of videos. We've called it Inside Public Works. This is a series that we're going to create a new video once a month. These will be informational videos about what we do in public works, who's responsible for what in public works, why we do it, and some other good pieces of information I think the public will enjoy to just get to learn better what we do and see some of the challenges that some of our people go through. So Stephanie's going to pull the video up and this is the first of the series and this has to do with the topic of today, illegal dumping and a little bit of education along with that. So Stephanie, if you'd go ahead with the video.
I'm Donnie Hooper, Director of Public Works for the City of Amarillo. On this edition of Inside Public Works, we're going to talk about something that affects all of us, illegal dumping. Did you know that it's illegal to place items next to your dumpster in the alleys or to even place items on vacant lots in the city? We found that some people in the City of Amarillo were actually unaware that this was considered illegal dumping and is against the law. Dumping illegally creates many challenges for the citizens of Amarillo and for our trash truck drivers as well. It's unsightly, it's unsafe, and it's something frankly that we're all wanting to see less of. Alan Harder is our Assistant Director of Public Works and he explains why illegal dumping is dangerous, unhealthy, and why it creates so many operational challenges for our solid waste employees.
There are several reasons that illegal dumping in the alleys is an issue for our solid waste drivers. The main concern is health issues associated with illegal dumping. It's a dangerous act that jeopardizes the health and safety of people, animals and the environment. Maneuvering safely down an alley is another reason it's a problem. And finally, just the cost of cleaning up these areas can be pretty expensive.
Let's take a ride with one of our solid waste professionals, hop up in the cab and see what they face when they run into illegal dumping locations while they're trying to run their routes in the alleys.
Got to come way on this side to miss the gas meter and then travel back to the north to try to miss the illegal dumping.
The only opening at a trash truck is at the top of the hopper. It'd be impossible for a driver to get out of his truck and load the items by hand. Also, the City of Amarillo collects over 36,000 dumpsters a week. It'd be unable to complete the routes if they had to stop and try to collect these items at each of the locations. For our boom trucks, it's just difficult enough to navigate and operate the equipment with overhead power lines, gas meters and other obstacles in the way.
So what makes this a challenge here when you have a dumpster like this?
When you have stuff piled next to a dumpster, it makes it hard because when I pick up that dumpster, all that stuff's going to fall right underneath it and there's nowhere for me to put the dumpster back. All this stuff in a tight alley makes it difficult to say. All this stuff in a tight alley makes it difficult to safely travel down the alleyway.
We have a residential big and bulky collection program that allows you to make one phone call, place your items in front of your house behind the curb, and one of our knuckle boom drivers will be by to pick it up within 48 hours. It's just that simple. And the best part of it, it's already calculated into our solid waste fees, so there's no additional charge for our residential customers.
There are many benefits for this program, but first and foremost is the convenience for the customers and the safety of our drivers. We're in a less confined and crowded area to pick up the items.
Illegal dumping is a problem in the City of Amarillo, and we realize that, and we're doing something about that. We've made enhancements to our ordinances, give us more tools in our toolbox to take care of this problem, as well as enhance the video surveillance program that we're putting into the alleys to catch the people who are doing the illegal dumping in our city. How can you help? Utilize our front yard collection program. It's a great program. In 48 hours or less, we'll be there to pick up your items.
Call us at 378-6813 and schedule a front yard collection. It's that simple. Also, if you see someone illegal dumping, please let us know. You can call Public Works at 378-6000. Or if you catch someone in the act, call the Amarillo Police Department at their non-emergency number 378-3038.
Hey, thanks for watching. We'll see you next time on Inside Public Works.
So there you have our first. I know that it's not a communication product that they put out from our wonderful people that create videos, but we made that in-house to take that off of their plate. You recognize some of the superstars in that with Stephanie and Alan have been great additions to this program. When they hit the ground in our office, we, we hit it running. And one of the priorities that I told them about was illegal dumping. That it's an issue, and we've got to start taking some steps towards it. So this is step one. We have more videos that'll be coming, not only addressing illegal dumping, but just some other things. Pothole patching, and you just name it. If you have any ideas, be sure and submit that to us. But we wanted to put this video for you, before you today, so council could see it before it actually goes out to the public and get your thoughts and, and if I'll answer any questions if you haven't.
Council questions?
Looked like a pretty well-done video to me. I wouldn't say, I wouldn't be downing your own video. I thought you did a great job.
Thank you.
I agree. It's real people answering the repressions. It's actually the people who are having to drive those routes and explain. And, you know, I've not, never thought about when those items, the dumpsters picked up and it falls over, where are you going to set it back down? You know, that's just, it's just common sense. But people don't necessarily think of it when they're stacking them and leaning them against it. So very well done. My question is, so for the case that you are taking to court, kind of what's the process with that, Donnie? Like, does someone get a warning? Are they then, were they a second round? What are the range of dollars someone can be fined? Kind of what, what's the court process?
Yeah, and I, and I may defer that back to either Jared or Brian, so they can be a little more accurate than I would be in describing that part of it. If they don't mind answering that question, that would be great. If not, I can sure get an answer back to you.
It's a, it's a civil penalty. So the penalty is given to, the citation is given to the owner of the vehicle. I can give it to Brian to give the legal part of it, but it, it's not a criminal deal. Now, there is, we do have the option, if something is extremely egregious, and we do have the information necessary to move it to a criminal situation, that is always an option. We, we have not ever eliminated that as an opportunity, but we make it, streamline it. We can make it a lot easier on residents. We can also make it a lot quicker so that we can be responsive to illegal dumping when people report it to us. Brian, do you have anything to add to that?
It's a whole penalty. You, we work this rate of hearing officer that we have in, in the city. So I think that's accurate.
And basically, our, just the only thing I can add to it, our process was, we review the video in Public Works. We have access to those cameras. Also, municipal court has access to those cameras. So when we see something that is actually a case that we feel like, well, number one, we've got a tag number that's clearly visible. We actually have the act taking place, and we captured it on those two cameras, then we can turn that over to municipal court. It's really pretty simple on our end as far as getting it over to Donna in court to work the process.
And Donnie, I just want to say thank you to you and your team for the changes that you guys are implementing ongoing. But a special thank you to Justin Smith, because I have had a lot of illegal dumping issues lately, as you are aware of. But I just appreciate the pride that he takes in his job and his work when he goes to take care of those issues. So a big, a big thank you to Justin Smith for me.
Councilwoman, I will pass that along to him. And just a little bit about Justin, if you haven't met him before. He is a hard-working guy, and if he sees something, instead of making a phone call to somebody else to come get it, which, he just pulls his pickup over and he loads it up in his pickup himself. And, and he's, he's just a fantastic employee. You saw him on the video. That's who was in the trash truck driving that. I called him up and I said, take me down some alleys. Let's go look at some dumping. And he got in that truck and brought it right over. I mean, he's just a go-getter. We really appreciate having him, and I'll pass it along.
Thank you, because I, I, I do appreciate him a great deal.
I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
I'm sorry, we just had the Oscars this last Sunday, but it'll be eligible for next year. Very good.
Maybe we should, Howard, maybe we should have the Howards, and you can give out awards to the best videos produced by the departments throughout the year.
Maybe so. Who knows? Let me ask you, now, how do you distribute that video? How are we going to get this to the public?
That's a very good question. We, we are going to use that through all of our social media outlets, of course. And that'll be, communications has been involved in it as well, reviewing it and giving us some tips and pointers along the way. But they will push that out from their end. We're also planning on embedding those in our website pages for Public Works, because we just don't think there's enough information on those webpages when you go to them to, to get the answers for some things that you're looking for. I mean, you can read a couple of items of text on there, but just to get a true, that's the whole idea, to get a true story to be told that they can click on, Jared. So our website, social media, any other way that we can get it out, we're going to push it out.
Thank you.
Donnie, the, one, one of the things citizens ask me the most is, like, when Justin drove up on that giant pile of trash, leaned up against the dumpster, why doesn't he keep a list in his truck that says, this is a pile that needs to be picked up? Like, right now, our system is very dependent on citizens initiating that pickup, citizen calling to report, you know, piles of trash in their alley. I'm wondering, is there some technology solution that, I mean, pardon me for just oversimplifying it, but couldn't each dumpster just have a giant barcode on it? And I know those guys, it's not safe for them to get in and out of their trucks. But if Justin could just stay seat-belted in and use a scanner like they use at Home Depot, and he could just scan that dumpster, and it would tell Public Works immediately, you know, there's a large item pickup here at the site of this dumpster. Is there something like that that we could use technology-wise that, so yes, citizens can call and report it, but our drivers who drive by it every single day could safely also report it?
Yes, Mayor, there is. And I, and I will address that in first, first by saying that we recognize too that we task our drivers with reporting those things when they're in the alleys. We also task them to turn that into a supervisor when they get into the office, the supervisor then turning that into a work order, the work order being put into the system. There's so many different channels that I feel like it's bogged down by the time that it actually reaches the system. Does it make it there or not? We're in the process of, of doing that now. Two things. One, myself, Stephanie, and Alan are going out Thursday ourself. We picked a neighborhood that we're going to drive through completely in separate vehicles. We're going to actually count all of the illegal dumping sites that we find, and we're going to compare those back to the work order system and see where we're setting. Because I do think there's a communication breakdown there. Secondly, the technology that we're looking into, and it's something that we're going to be, we're still in the investigative stages of it, but I know that I implemented this in the community that I was in prior to coming here. And it was extremely successful, and it's as simple as an app on a phone, where you can do it as a driver of a truck, or you can do it as a city employee. You can do it as a, a citizen, where you just simply take a picture, snap that, it GPS locates that, sends it through a work order system, and it lands in the lap of the person that actually takes care of that work order. So I'm kind of giving a preview to something that we really haven't shared a lot with, with the management team yet. I know that Floyd's aware that we're, we're going down that rabbit hole, but we haven't quite got there yet. But I think we'll get there pretty soon where we can, in other words, what I, I hear what you're saying, and I think you're exactly right. There's, there's got to be an easier way for people to report that, including the many employees that we have that are out in the streets and alleys every day. We have the best reporting mechanism that there is. It's people, employees. So we're, we're going down, we're going down that road, and I think we'll have a solution soon that we can put before you.
I think that's good leadership, Donnie. You're exactly right. Part of it is maximizing the use of the assets that you already have. And you have a great team, and they cover, they cover the entire city twice a week now, you know? So, I mean, how could we better deploy them as information gatherers? It's about making it easier for them and making it quicker, more efficient. So. And so, there's so many citizens who want to help, you know? Like, when I go online and, 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 you know, if I see something that this store or product producer wants me to buy, they make it as easy as possible for me to just hit PayPal, and, you know, one-click purchasing is very dangerous for my credit card. But it exists, and there's a reason that it exists. And that's because it's super easy to capture my attention in that moment and get me to click one time to take care of that shopping. So how will we turn this problem into a one-click solution? Because there are so many people who do want to help. If they just knew it was only a one-click, and they had that app and they were familiar with it. So I, I'm interested in seeing you guys pursue that.
Okay, will do.
Any, any other comments, council? Any other one-click shoppers out there that think that's a good idea? Okay, great. Well, we will look forward to hearing more about that. Let's move on to Item 1E, which is an update from the AEDC. I see Kevin Carter.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Welcome.
A lot of exciting things in this first quarter of the year.
Yes.
And so I'm going to start off with talking about sales tax increase. 10 months in a row of sales tax growth. And that says a lot about our economy and how fortunate we are in Amarillo, Texas to have the assets that we have and the citizens that have, have remained steadfast during the pandemic. Those are 10 months in a row of sales tax growth versus 10 months of COVID number versus pre-COVID. So that's pretty exciting. We certainly.
I'm going to pause you for just a second, because I've had a couple of citizens say to me, when they hear us say that, they think we're raising sales tax. And I just want to clarify that what.
Collected.
We're collecting sales tax, not because we changed the rate. Actually, that rate is set by the Texas Legislature. Our rate is 8.25%, and it can't go any higher. That's as high as it can go. And the state takes 6.25% of that, and then 2% of it stays here locally. But what we mean when we say it's gone up for 10 months in a row is we have so much economic activity happening here locally, then the revenue that that tax rate produces is gone up.
Yes, ma'am. The, the collection. Yes, ma'am. So that's good. Thank you for pointing that out. So of that 2% that stays local, the, the AEDC gets a half a percent of that, or, or. And so, you know, we, we certainly want to be respectful of those, those small businesses and that have had challenges through this, but for the most part, our economy has done way better than the rest of the state and certainly better than the rest of the nation. To give you an example, the top 20 collectors in the state of Texas, Amarillo is the 14th largest city. We're the 11th largest collector of sales tax. That means this year, we will be over a $4 billion retail economy, which is just huge in comparison to some other cities that are larger than us. I want to point out the last two months, in those top 20 collectors, we've been positive, obviously. But last month, the state average was a 5% or 6% decrease. And this month, the average city in the state of Texas had a 2.5% decrease, and we were up five, about 6% this month, and about the same last month. So very exciting news and exciting that our economy has, is doing well in comparison to others. So probably the worst-kept secret in the history of this company, if you didn't know, Amazon's coming to town. The council approved on January 26th an incentive to bring Amazon to Amarillo with a million-square-foot non-sortable fulfillment center. That's going to have about $12.5 million of annual payroll, 500 employees. The economic activity is just going to be untold. And what that's going to bring to our city. We partnered with the City of Amarillo and Potter County on this project. They both entities gave tax abatement on this. And I, I want to say a couple of really nice, a really nice thank you to Andrew Freeman at the City of Amarillo. It, it was a joy to work on this project. It was a, it was a joint project with the City of Amarillo and the AEDC. And so I'm very thankful for the, the relationship that we have with the city in bringing economic development projects to our city. And then we had a virtual ribbon cutting for Amazon on March the 11th. Appreciate the, the city. Dr. Eddie Sauer came over and was, represented the city. And we had John Coffey from the county that represented Potter County. And then we had an Amazon representative, and then also a big shout out to Four Price and to Senator Cal Seliger, who joined the call as well. And so we had a virtual ribbon cutting, and I want to say a big thank you to Donnie Hooper for allowing us to use the Sims Building where we could socially distance for that, for that event. They're looking at a first-quarter 2022 completion. If you've been out there in the last week, there's three, there's walls going up. So the concrete panels are going up, and pretty exciting. They were certainly braced, really. There were a lot of braces on a couple of the sides with the wind last week that was blowing. So very exciting to see that progress in our city. And that is located out on 24th Street and Loop 335. We hosted our State of the Economy event. We had 250 attendees that were on our website. Monica Metta, an economist from Houston, did that event for us. But we had over 5,000 that watched that on PBS, on the two airings that happened on PBS. We're thankful for the partnership that we had with our local PBS that's housed at Amarillo College, and we're thankful to have that outlet. And that was a big success to have that many people that are interested in the economy of our city. And so a big shout out to PBS. We also approved a high-demand job training grant for AISD. That was, that gave us the ability, and we appreciate the, our board approving that and city council approving that. That allowed us to give $50,000 to AISD for aviation equipment training. And then they're going to use the mats that came from Texas Workforce Commission. Another 50,000, they're going to use that for welding equipment. And that is going to be a big boost for the Amtech Career Academy. And we, the council and some of our AEDC staff had the privilege to tour that a couple of weeks ago. What an awesome facility that is really going to be a game changer for our community. Hats off to the Amarillo Independent School District Administration, their school board for putting the, the money into that facility that is going to be literally a game changer for us in growing our workforce and an economic recruiting tool for us. We can use that for companies coming in that, for, for folks that want to move to Amarillo, that their kids are going to be able to be trained in, in trades, that, you know, not everybody's geared to go to a four-year school, and that we are going to have a workforce that's ready for those trade positions and those trade skills. And so we're really excited. Hats off to Jay Barrett. I know he. I know he's really excited about the opportunity that's going to happen at Amtech. And so if you ever get a chance to go tour that, they're hoping to have that open in the fall. That's in the old Sears building that's located at Plains. And, well, on Plains, not sure what the cross street is. Somebody may help me, but what that is. But really excited about, about the opportunity there. That's, that's going to be one of the biggest things that's happened in our community in a long time. Wanted to kind of give you an update on some of our previous projects that we've had, had approved and where they are in, in the process. SSI Foods, they opened in September of 2020. They have started their second shift. If you haven't had a chance to go out and look at that building, that is a phenomenal facility that's located out at our Centerport Business Park on the far east side. Sharpened Iron Studios had a ribbon cutting on February 26th with their first studio. That is really exciting. It's, it's great to have something as a new industry in town. And sharpened iron is a new industry in our community. And we can't, we don't see anything but a bright future for sharpened iron. And we're really excited about their future and what that holds. That's in the, in part of the old downtown campus of Amarillo College is where that's located. Panhandle Pure, one of our, one of my favorite projects that we've done since I've been here in Amarillo is taking an existing building that we had and turning that into a new business. And it, and it, this is one of our businesses that came out of the, the COVID pandemic. Affiliated Foods and Plains Dairy could not get bottled water to distribute at the start of the pandemic. And they said, you know what? Let's create our own bottled water company. And so that is going to be operational in late May. And so really excited about that. That's going to employ about 30 employees in there. And so really excited about that and ready, ready to see that facility. I have not seen the inside of that facility yet. Saw Guy Lonergan, the dean of the vet school, and kind of got an update from him. I saw him yesterday. They are on pace and are going to open this fall. They're looking at an August 2nd move in date to be completely done with most of the building. But where they can function, some of the lab space is not going to open till October, but they don't need that till then anyway. They've got 64 students is going to be in this freshman class. That's exciting. And faculty, they're ahead of schedule on hiring faculty. So really excited about a lot of new professionals that have moved into the Amarillo area to, to be faculty on that vet school and what the, the great things that we see coming out of Texas Tech on the vet school. One of the things that I'm kind of most excited about is in Governor Abbott's State of the State speech. We got a shout out and Amarillo did specifically that we've had the most economic activity that we've had in the last 30 years. And that is a true statement. We are busy, our staff, we have a wonderful staff of nine people at the office, and we have been nothing but busy. And so really excited about that. We're getting a lot of leads from the governor's office. So we're working all kinds of leads and not just one type of industry, but in probably five or six different industries that we're working leads on. And so very exciting, a lot of exciting things. It's a great time to be in Amarillo, Texas. Would certainly answer any questions, Mayor or counsel.
Sure, any questions? What a great report, Kevin. Any questions for the EDC, counsel?
Keep it up.
Kevin, I will tell you.
Mayor, I think Howard is, but we can't hear him.
Okay, Howard.
I said, I don't have any question, just keep bringing us things.
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, I would, Kevin, my husband and I went out on Saturday just looking outside the construction fence at the vet school and how far they've come and what progress they're making. And there was someone else in their car right out there by the construction entrance. And it was a, a husband and wife who have a son entering. He's one of the 64 entering this year's class. And they were also just looking at the construction. And so there we were, just a big part of the conversation. They, they were quite surprised to find themselves in a conversation with the mayor. But they were talking about they had come to town to buy a house. So economic activity there. Then they stayed in a hotel two night. So Stevie B activity there, Councilmember Hayes. They, for the three days that they coming back and buying things locally in our community. So I thought this is how the vet school gets to $76 million of economic activity in our city every single year. Because every year there will be a new entering class. And this was just one of 64 families that will have this moving in and getting adjusted to being in the city. So I, I just stumbled upon it, but I wanted to share that story because it just, it became very real for me. All the work that you guys have done to open the door for that opportunity for our city. And it's exciting, so.
Yeah, in talking, in talking to Dean Lonergan, you know, 64 students this year, then they're going to go to 80 next year, and then they'll get to full capacity in that third year, which is 100. That's so, you know, typically when they get to, you know, in that sixth or seventh year, they'll have 400 students at a time. I think he told me, which is exciting, that of the 64, I, I'm going to get this wrong, but don't quote me on it exactly. But I think it's about 25% of the 64 are first generation college students. You know, this is their, this is the first family member in the, in, in their family to have a degree, and they're going for an advanced degree. So very exciting. And so we're, you know, it's, it's just exciting. We've got a lot of exciting things. But you know, when you've got a great product like Amarillo to sell, it's, it makes it, sure makes it easier, and we do have a great product to sell.
Yeah. Right.
I just wanted to add also a follow up on Texas Tech that we appreciated. There were two representatives from the school that were at the opening of the new medical facility at the Animal Management and Welfare last week. And again, just reemphasizing that partnership and the training and how they, they made the comment during the opening that they were able to use those Texas Tech professors and deans as consultants to say what type of training equipment, what type of surgical equipment, all those different things to have their input. And the design and implementation of that facility is, is just another tremendous benefit to our community of having the Texas Tech Vet School here in Amarillo.
Yeah, absolutely. So. And I want to say, Councilmember Hayes, thank you for what you've done the last four years, and I appreciate working with you. So.
Thanks, Kevin, me too, you.
Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate. Okay, let's move on to item one F, presentation of the January 2021 Homeless Point in Time Count.
I remember we've got Director of Community Development, Jason Willsberger, here to walk us through it. Jason?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. I'm very happy to be here to present the Amarillo 2021 Homeless Point in Time Count. I'm going to share my screen with you. All right. So what is the point in timing, point in time count? The point in time count is a count of sheltered and unsheltered people experiencing homelessness on a single 24 hour period in January. Amarillo's Point in Time Count was conducted on January 29th, 2021. HUD requires the Continuum of Care or the COC conduct an annual count of people experiencing homelessness in their area. A COC is a collaboration of all homeless service providers in a geographic area. The Community Development Department is the lead agency for the Amarillo COC. So what does HUD use the data for? This report informs Congress about the number of people experiencing homelessness in the city, state, and country. The effectiveness of HUD's programs and policies in decreasing those numbers and the funding needs to support the Amarillo Continuum of Care. So in accordance with HUD's guidance on how to conduct the pit counts, the Counting Us mobile app was used for the point in time count survey. It's easier to conduct surveys. We're able to map locations, as you can see in our graphic here. And we're also able to de-duplicate surveys to make sure that we're not counting people more than once. We also utilize the Homeless Management Information System or HMIS to assist in verifying the data that we collected during, during our interviews. So let's get to the answer that everyone's asking. How many people are experiencing homelessness in Amarillo in 2021? And that number this year is 495. So the great news, as you can see by this graphic here, that we've actually had a decrease of 105 people in the last year. I want to point out that's during a pandemic that we actually had a decrease of 105. We have seen a decrease of 279 since January of 2019. So over the course of the last two years, we've seen a 36% decline. And that's amazing. I'm going to share this next slide with you. This is from security.org. Security.org actually recently cited Amarillo as the city with the fourth largest decline in homeless population in the United States from 2019 to 2020 with a 22.8% decline. And as I previously stated, over the, over the past two years, we've actually experienced a 36% decline. So we're definitely on the right track. So here a little bit for the bad news. The national average reflects that there are actually 175.8 individuals experiencing homelessness per 100,000 population. In Texas, that average is 93.4 per 100,000. Then unfortunately, Amarillo's average is a disheartening 248.3 per 100,000. While we are heading in the right direction, there are still too many people experiencing homelessness in the city of Amarillo, and we still have plenty of work to do. I take a little closer look at the numbers of the 495. 191 of those were sheltered in places like the Salvation Army, Faith City Mission Downtown Women's Center, Another Chance House, Martha's Home, and Family Support Services Safe House. And then our unsheltered, 304 were unsheltered in places not meant for habitation like alleyways, tents, and vehicles. Little bit further look into the numbers here, the past three point in time counts to compare. You can see that we are, from 2019 to today, we are definitely headed in the right direction. Here's the one that I really want to brag a little bit about. So here's our great news. In the past year, the number of chronically homeless has decreased from 163 to 35. We are now at a much improved 7% of our homeless population being classified as chronically homeless. I want to remind you what chronically homeless means. HUD defines chronically homeless as a person who has been continuously homeless for at least 12 months or on at least four separate occasions in the last three years, where the combined occasions must total at least 12 months. So these are folks that have been homeless for a lengthy period of time. And you can see that we have definitely hit our mark whenever we're trying to decrease those chronically homeless. So what's the city of Amarillo's response been? The COC identified chronic homelessness as the area in greatest need of immediate solutions. You see that in 2018, we created the Coming Home Team. We have so far housed 131 chronically homeless since 2018, and we have an 85.5% success rate. This has been a very successful program, and it's definitely been one of the major contributors to that, to that number of chronically homeless being decreased. Few more stats that we collected during the last two point in time counts. I'm just going to leave this up here for just a moment for you to kind of look at this. Some of the numbers that I'm particularly proud of is the fact that we have no unsheltered children, both last year and this year. We, we make it a definite point that we get families with children into, into homes and into shelters. So. I definitely want to thank all of the volunteers and the teams that we had put together. You can see some great looking folks here. That top left corner is actually folks from Randall County Sheriff's Office. You see Officer Jensen from Amarillo Police Department. And then down that bottom, you see we have some great city manage, management leaders there. Mitch Norman, Laura Storrs, Kevin Starbuck, excellent people that helped us out there on our, on our point in time count. We have a great time doing that. And it's, we, it's definitely something we can't do on our own. We have to have all of these volunteers. So in the middle of a pandemic, getting 84 volunteers out there was pretty incredible. Definitely want to thank all of our donors that, that got us materials that we could get out to the, to the homeless population. And then, of course, our great event partners. All right, any questions?
Jason, I had a question back on your numbers, the last year versus this year. There was a, it looked like there was a shift. The thing was the very last slide you used that had numbers, where we had a larger number that was sheltered last year versus unsheltered. And then those numbers seemed to switch. And so our number went down, but the category was a major shift. So do you have some insight into what caused that? Because we're wanting to eradicate homelessness, but between the sheltered versus unsheltered, we do want people to have shelter as part of that process. It's, it's much more concerning that, that large number in the unsheltered.
Absolutely. So one of the things that I'll tell you is that we in Amarillo are blessed that we've got two wonderful emergency shelters, overnot shelters, being the Salvation Army and Faith City Mission. With those two entities, we actually have well over 300 beds that, that have place for folks that they can go to be sheltered. Now, that has to be a choice, you know? They, they still have the choices to whether they want to stay there or not. I, I believe that the pandemic and the fact that those folks are so packed in there a lot of times that, that, that did probably. But you know, in our interviews, that is something that we had a lot of folks telling us that particularly chose not to, not to utilize the shelters because of the pandemic. So that's something that we're definitely keeping an eye on to see if that's a trend that's going to continue. We work very closely with the Salvation Army and Faith City to continue to have those, that dialogue to, to see where we're at.
Jason, when is the next point in count scheduled?
So we, sure, we are, usually we only do one a year, but I guess it was 2019, we did our, our first second one, which we did in the summer. We are going to do another one in July this year. So we're going to do a second one here and look at, we're already getting plans together to do that again. And it's going to be, like I say, in July this year.
Jason, you almost, you also commented that the Coming Home Program you had like an 85.5% success, success rate, which is really high. That's a great report. Do you know if that's kind of standard or is that higher than that program?
It's, it is actually, it's, it's above the national average of, which is 85%. So we're right about the right area when it comes to that. We're actually in the middle of adding new people. We're actually probably going to add about 20 to 25 new people to the program here in the next few months. So our, our average will actually increase.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jason? Jason, that's great information. Y'all are doing very, very important work. And I know it's, you're the face of it today in this report, but there are so many people behind you and on your team, and you have, like you said, great support from, whether it's Randall County Sheriff's Office or the police department, or even the executive leadership staff. You have a lot of people on your team and have a lot of attention to this issue. So I, I really, on behalf of the citizens, on behalf of the council, we appreciate you. We appreciate the work the team is doing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next is item one G, which is a presentation of proposition two. It's an update on where we are with Prop Two.
There are a lot of good information, and, and you're going to hear on time, under budget, a lot. So Jerry, Jerry Danforth, Director of Facilities, also the guru behind these plans. Jerry?
Welcome, Jerry.
Well, hello, Mayor and Counsel. It's a pleasure to come in front of you with this information. It's something, obviously, we've been working on for the last four years. Proposition two was tasked to this department to get addressed and get constructed. We are going to use in the slideshow. You see that facilities likes to use talented people. Donnie Hooper put together our video production for us, so you'll get. you'll get to see what, what he does for the second time. We are proud of where we're at. As Mr. Miller commented, we are ahead of schedule and we are under budget across the board on all of the projects. But I do want to point out the fact that when we're under, when I say under budget, we're under budget on the construction now. The remaining amount of the Prop 2 money is turned back to the departments to use for their additional needs within those facilities. And so when we get to the bottom of Prop 2 and the Prop 2 project, understand we will spend exactly what the voters approved and no more than that. So we will be, as, as Mr. Miller stated, under budget and on time or ahead of schedule across the board on everything that we promised to deliver to the public when they voted to approve Prop 2. Stephanie, if you'll go ahead with the video, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end of it.
Share the video now. And just one disclaimer, there is not any sound to this video, so don't worry when you don't hear anything.
Thank you, Stephanie. You saw all the projects that we did with both Animal Management, Fire Department, and the Police Department. If we didn't have the cooperation from those department heads and helping us in those designs, we wouldn't have been able to achieve the goals that those departments had. The numbers you see represented is what we, the actual spends were for each of those departments going forward. So you can see with Police Department, we had the seventh floor remodel, the courts remodel, the gym renovations, remodeling the building across the street from the Police Department, streetscape around two city blocks, and secure parking for the police office. Apartments included fire stations, 3, 9, 5, and the new fire garage that was purchased that we're currently in the midst of remodeling as we speak. Animal Management, what we did for that department was we actually worked with the directors out there, finding the needs that they had, and combined all of the projects that they had approved into one construction project that we could deliver the full scope of what they were asking and what their needs were. When you look at the Prop 2 for construction, the total Prop 2 spend for construction dollars is $16,267,249. We had budgeted for us for construction, $17,354,067. As I stated before, the remaining dollars that we were able to save, we were able to turn back to Police and Fire, Animal Management, buy additional equipment, FFNE, and other things that would benefit their operations. I also want to point out with you as a council, when we came before you two years ago and expressed our concern and asked for your approval to move forward with these projects at an expedited rate. If we did not do that at that time, I do not believe we would have been able to deliver everything that we have delivered to date due to increases that we're seeing in construction costs of anywhere from 12 to 18% across the board. So that basically wraps up where we're at. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding projects or the deliverables.
Council, questions for Jerry?
Yeah, I do. So I'll go back to the Animal Management and Welfare. Because the original plan that was per, that was placed in front of the voters looked significantly different than what was actually built. But you worked with directly with the Animal Management and Welfare Directors and staff, and you came up with the best possibility that gave them everything pretty much that they, that they were really needing and asking for, correct?
Absolutely. In fact, they've got a little bit more than was, than what was originally planned for. Because we did combine it into one structure that saved us a lot in construction cost. The only, the only item that we really didn't touch was what they called the drive-through facility. Drive-through facility is the only component that they didn't get delivered. But we did enhancements on the structure itself that negated the need for that. And thus, we were able to move those dollars into construction of the building and provide some additional scope and additional service.
Yeah. So in essence, the exact amount of money, there was no money funnel sent to another portion of it. It was basically, it was retained within that project just because that was, that turned out to be an expensive, well, relatively speaking, it was an expensive project in and of itself. I mean, when you're talking about trying to create a surgical facility and observation and all of that, being able to put it into one building, that was a relatively expensive spend.
Yes, it was. That design, that design changed quite drastically from the original proposal in the proposition to true needs, yet still delivering all of the asks that they put in the proposition. So they were able to get their full scope that was in the proposition.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things whenever I went and met with Rob Sherwin, he was, of course, he was gone before the final turning the keys over, but he was incredibly impressed with exactly what Animal Management and Welfare. And he's just an outside guy coming in, trying to help us make for sure we had our ship headed in the right direction. And he was pretty pleased with what he actually saw was transpiring.
Yes, there was a lot of, a lot of study into what was going on in other parts of the country. I know I personally toured these up in Colorado that are pretty nationally recognized. And I would say that our system is far above what they currently have up there. I think that the comments from those from Texas Tech that were out there, being able to adapt to, basically our system was designed and built, and they were able to move into it because it was designed well enough that they could adapt their stuff to it immediately.
And that also kind of turned out to be a really good thing because there was a, I guess you could call it an alliance that was set up basically that allowed us to be able to use their buying power to purchase equipment.
That's correct.
Which was another cost savings to that.
Yeah, the delivery, what, what you've got for what your spend was is substantial. You really did realize quite a bit of cost savings, both in construction and timelines and utilization of the facilities. I can tell you that the guys at the Police Department and the firefighters are extremely happy to be in their new facilities and able to function a lot better than what they did in the past. Just looking at what they were in before versus the old firehouse that was built back in the 50s and 60s. There is no comparison. One of the firemen, I heard he made the comment, old fire station five would have actually fit in the truck bays of the new five. And so when you look at the scale of what, what we were able to deliver to them, it, it, it was quite impressive.
It was quite impressive. You're right.
Jerry, one of the other things that in the midst of the last couple of years, just based on what construct we were seeing with construction costs, some of the different issues, it looked like we might not be able to have enough to get that final project garage for the Fire Department. And to have all the resources we were going to need. And so just kudos to you and your team for figuring out an alternative and figuring out purchasing, renovate an existing building, and we're going to be able to provide everything that was promised to the taxpayers, get to the end of the project, and do it within the budget that was identified. So, well done. When it came down to that last little one, and I think it's going to turn out great.
Well, it was a great partnership with the Fire Department. They had located some of that property initially and brought it to us to take a look at to see if we could, and it absolutely worked out great for the Fire Department and the city of Amarillo. So it's, it's a wonderful grab for that.
Jerry, can you just walk us back through the process? We've been on this journey with you. So as far as a council member, I think we all understand it, but I think there are some citizens who might be watching or who might watch this later who wonder why we approved this in 2016 and why we're just completing the work in 2021. So I'll let you talk about that. But one of the things I have been asked recently is why didn't the city design these projects before they ever put them on the ballot? And I've heard you talk about two different things as to why, but I'll give you those questions. Why did it take five years? And why didn't we design them specifically before they went on the ballot?
Right. So I'll touch on the timeline first. The facility projects actually weren't scheduled to be completed for another couple of years, for another over a year. Jerry, what, what was the original scheduled completion date for all of these projects?
The last of the projects was supposed to be completed in the December of next year. Because of the way that the funding was coming through, the propositions, all of the funding didn't come through upfront. It came through in stages. And so consequently, we would design to the amount of money that we were receiving at the time. And so that's, Mayor, that kind of addresses one of your questions. A certain portion of the money, we designed to that portion of the funds so that we can deliver the fullest scope at that point.
Yeah, one of the keys there is, Jerry mentioned, we were looking even farther into the future to be completing these projects. That was what was presented in, in the original bond. As we, and when you put together a bond, you'd have to estimate what inflation is going to be throughout the life of the bond program and how mu, how far you're going to be able to get with the amount of funds you've been authorized by the voters. So in this case, Prop 2, we, we could clearly see early on in the bond program, as we were implementing these projects, right after we started Fire Station 3 and right before we started Fire Station 9, Fire Station 5, the Fire Station, sorry, the Fire Maintenance Facility, and some of the Police Projects, we accelerated some of these projects, really most of these projects, because we knew if we waited until the, until later in the bond program, as we had originally programmed these projects, we knew we wouldn't have enough money to finish these, a number of the projects. And that actually was a challenge we were facing with the Fire Maintenance Facility. We set some, the residual funds aside for construction, then add to it year over year through the general fund to try and get to a point where we could build that new facility. But because the Fire Department did such a good job of finding a perfect facility, I mean, we couldn't have found a better facility for this. This is a facility that was originally built by Greyhound. It was designed to maintain buses, which are basically very similar dimension wise, fire, maintenance need wise, not so much weight wise, but the foundation was built to handle fires, but fire trucks, something, the weight of a fire truck. So it was basically purpose-built for the type of thing that we're going to do with it. So we had enough money to acquire and put significant resources into renovating it to serve the Fire, Fire Department's needs from a maintenance standpoint. It's a perfect acquisition. But if we hadn't accelerated Station 9, Station 5, Animal Management, and some other projects, we would not have had enough money to buy that or to finish these projects. Now, design, why didn't we design these projects before the election? So people would know exactly what they're getting. Is that, is that basically the question?
Just so that they could have moved faster, like.
Got it, got it. So why didn't we design it?
Charity issue.
Yeah. Why didn't we design it so they could move faster? Well, design is a significant portion of the cost. It's anywhere from 6 to 10% of the cost of the project itself. Jerry could probably tell me more exactly on some of the, some of the ranges of design costs, but we had a whole lot of facilities in that, in that bond proposal, seven different bonds, I believe. Most of them did not pass, only two passed. So there's a lot of money that you put into design and time. If we had spent the money and the time to design all of those projects, yes, the ones that passed could have gone faster. But we're investing money without voter approval on projects that might not get approved. I know that nobody wants to, let's just use 10% as a round number. I know that sometimes it's less than that. But if we, for example, designed a, the ARC project, the Nautatorium Facility, we would have been anywhere from a million and a half to $2 million into design without knowing if we were going to be able to build the project. So there's a lot of money tied up in design. And it would be irresponsible to spend that money not knowing if we're going to be able to do, well, I won't say irresponsible. It would not be financially wise to design those projects, not knowing if we're going to be able to build them.
Thank you for that extra explanation. Anything else, Council?
I'll give you my grandmother's answer to that. That'd be the cart before the horse.
Yeah, that's a great analogy. I could have just said that.
Yeah, and then if you really think about that, 10% of that whole set of projects was 25 to 30 million that we would have spent in advance before even taking it to the voters. And there's no way that you could spend 25 to 30 million dollars to do, to prepare for that.
So I'm glad that we had a chance to explain that. And hopefully folks who had that question, well, this, this, that answer will make its way back to them. Okay, anything else on Prop 2, Council? Jerry, I do want to say your team has done so much of this construction. And that's another reason why we can do it at the dollar points that we've been able to do it is because of your expertise, the way your team works together so well. We really have a secret weapon in our facilities team. So Jared, a big pat on the back for you, a big pat on the back for Jerry Danforth, whether it's baseball stadiums or police facilities, fire stations, you guys can get the job done for less. And as taxpayers, we appreciate that.
Yeah, and Mayor, not to jump in and jump on and add to that, or in the interest of adding to that, I, I think it's important to point out. And you're alluding to it, Jerry, Jerry and his team designed a number of these projects without any architectural help from outside because we have in-house architects. Now, they're tasked with other projects, but, but where we have bandwidth, we went ahead and did that so that we could save, save money and accelerate the projects some.
Good.
Some cases, we built it too.
Yeah. Jerry, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Well done.
Yes. Okay, Council, do y'all need a, a quick break before we move on to non-consent and consent? Or do we want to just push through? I, we calculate, we've got about, I don't know, 30, 40 minutes left. Want to take a break?
Mayor, I would like to take a break.
Okay, let's take a break and we'll be back in about five minutes.
Yes, ma'am. We are ready to go.
Okay, so we are at the item 1H, Request Future Agenda Items and Reports from the City Manager. Does anybody have anything? I mean, kind of a weird ask. We're all kind of in limbo.
Mayor, I did want to request an opportunity to update some new issues going on with By the Way. And some new opportunities there. So to report, that'd be my final, final report. You get to update you guys on some stuff going on with By the Way.
Okay, great. Thank you, Elaine. We'll get that on there. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on then and talk about the consent agenda. Elaine, do we need to circle back? Elaine, do we need to circle back? Do you have questions about Item E, 2E?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, this sounds like a little different grant in that we're not receiving the dollars upfront, but it's only as a reimbursement. And because we found other resources through the efforts of Casey and staff to be sure those were covered, we may not actually qualify for all these dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Kevin, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, twofold. Almost every grant program is a reimbursement program. There are very few programs to give you the money upfront. That's just not the way grants work from the federal government or the state. So even the FEMA reimbursement that we're seeking under the major disaster declaration is reimbursement for costs already incurred. The same would apply to this grant. And quite honestly, 4.1 million at this point in the game is a sizable sum of money. Very appreciated that the federal government is utilizing its resources to make that available to offset the costs related to vaccination efforts related to COVID. I find it very challenging, if not impossible, for us to spend that much money on the program. But it will at least cover the costs of the vaccination program through the term of the grant.
And that timeframe, is that the August 31st, 2024?
August 31st, 2024, yes. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. August 31st, 2024 is what this current grant is, that the state has awarded us, is eligible for. So any expenses we incurred during that timeframe. So Casey mentioned we're looking at adding a handful of staff to the Public Health Department specific to assist with COVID vaccinations. Those staff would only be on staff through the term of the grant. And at the end of the grant, we would either move them on to other employment opportunities within the city or elsewhere. So it's temporary employment under the grant program.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
Okay, anything else then, counsel? Any other items we need to talk about before we hear a motion on the consent agenda? Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
I saw a second from Howard. So it's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. That passes with the 5-0 vote. Item 3A on the non-consent agenda is consideration of a resolution that would adopt the Amarillo Area Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2020. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, we've got Director of Emergency Management Chip Orton to present the item. Chip?
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is a FEMA-approved planning process that identifies hazards and develops long-term strategies for protecting people and property. This planning process involves key stakeholders from our jurisdictions and specifies the most likely hazards that we have in our area and develops strategies to mitigate or prevent as much of an impact as possible. As an example, we're seeking backup power systems and generators in lieu of the lessons learned from winter storms in the past couple of years. In addition, there are education programs on zero escaping in relation to drought. Our plan is updated every five years. The 2020 update is important to tell you, is actually approved by FEMA already. But to finish the effort that we have to do, all three of our jurisdictions, Potter County, Randall County, and Amarillo, have to adopt resolutions accepting it. At this point, the two counties have adopted resolutions for this as of this morning. I will tell you, this is a tremendous achievement for us. It takes over a year to go through this process and get to this point. And there's a lot of effort from staff in doing this, specifically Crystal Belt, our emergency management planner, but also Alice Ely, Max Dunlap, and Jamie O'Donnell. Our staff does a great job of getting these meetings together and discussing the information involved. So this approval is needed for that resolution. And really what that enables us to do is adopt or apply for mitigation grant funds and other kinds of grant programs through FEMA. And that's really what this is about. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Chip, go ahead. Go ahead.
Chip, you mentioned this is done, updated every five years. I would be interested to hear if there were any significant changes from the past five years, if new hazards were identified, if there was any change in any priority or very little from the last five years.
It stayed fairly static. However, there is an emphasis, obviously, on the winter storms. We were in process for that. And of course, this was adopted before this winter. It just takes a while for it to get through FEMA. But we're excited to see that we were focused on the right things with the winter storms that we had. Certainly drought is always something that is of interest and is of concern to us as we always seem to have an issue with that. But other than that, the priorities pretty much stay the same. There is a little bit less of an emphasis on severe weather, although we always know that it can affect us at any point, including today as I look at the radar. So.
Chip, I'm not seeing anything in here with regard to a public health crisis. I'm only seeing weather and natural disaster planning. So I assume this plan only addresses those type of disasters?
Yes, ma'am, they're very specific. So you're looking at basically what you see in nature along with wildfires. It's really what this is limited to.
Okay. Anything else, counsel, for Chip? Okay, thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Counsel, we need a motion to approve this.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the resolution to adopt the 2020 update to the Amarillo Area Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a core component of the emergency management program to identify community hazards and highlight mitigating strategies to enhance community resiliency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the plan as presented. Any further questions or discussion from the council? Hearing done. All of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That passes with the 5-0 vote. Item 3B is related to milling and overlay and some funds expended from Prop One. So Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, this is the Proposition One, Milling and Overlay Project. This is the fourth quadrant that we're doing. There's so many different types of paving projects that we do throughout the year. Recently, in the last handful of years, we've been doing Prop One projects. We also have general fund projects, seal coating and other things. So I want to let City Engineer Matt Thomas talk about the project, explain what it is, and answer any questions, counsel, as. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to present this project for consideration of award. This is our FY 2021 Milling and Overlay Project. This is part of the Community Investment Program Proposition One that was approved back in 2016 by the voters. I'm going to share my screen here. Like I said, it is part of the CIP Proposition One funds. As you can see, on here, this is what we're calling our Milling and Overlay. You can see the four different arterials that we are going to be performing this milling and overlay on. We're looking at Ross Street, effectively from I-40 north to the bridge over the railroad tracks, 26th Avenue from South Georgia over to Paramount, Colter Road from 34th down to 45th, and Arden Road from Colter over to I-27. I know you've heard me mention it before in previous presentations. We're looking for the right product on the right road at the right time. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a project up for award, which was the Seal Coat, what we call our summer maintenance project. This time, we're looking at milling overlay. So when we're looking at milling overlay, we're generally looking at arterial roads. They're in moderate condition. They haven't gotten to the point where they have to be reconstructed. So you're looking at cracking. You are starting to see some small failures in those roads. So this is kind of that next step. You know, after we've done seal coating, this is kind of the next step down the ladder of reconstruction of these arterial roads. This year, we're looking at 116,000 roughly square yards of resurfacing. That's about 3.6 miles of arterial roads. That equates roughly to 17 lane miles. This year, through the Best Value Award, we are recommending award to L.A. Fuller and Sons Construction in the amount of $2.2 million, $84,695.73. After, if this project is awarded, we would look at construction starting sometime in the middle of this summer coming up. And we would anticipate it being completed before the end of the summer as that's the end of our paving season. As part of this, I know you all are always looking for the best way to engage the public in these projects. Obviously, this is kind of in various parts of the city and it's arterial roads that you may use once, you may use every day. We will be having a public meeting to let people come in, ask questions, look at the project, talk to us about their concerns. We also, one of the best tools we've had, and we've discovered over the last couple of years with all these road projects going on, is the project website. We have incorporated that for all of our street maintenance projects, not just this. It shows our residential projects, our arterial seal coat type projects, our micro-surfacing. And it also includes this milling overlay project. People can get on there, check out. It'll have when we're going to start, when it's under construction and when it's complete. It's good that you can see it because it also shows what we're working on, all of our projects, our road projects. It also includes when the city maintenance crews on their seal coat, part of their seal coat project, the areas that they're working in as well. So this is a great tool for anybody to go look at and they can kind of see where everything is at on any of these given projects. And that's been just great for people to be like, okay, where's this at? Is it under construction? Is that on my route to work? Okay, it looks like they're going to start this, so maybe we can route it. I can take a different route to work that day or that week. With these milling, they are a little longer term. You know, it does take a week or so or two to mill an overlay road as opposed to some of our other products that we're using that are a little bit faster, but not quite as robust of a product. I wanted to provide this map that we were just talking about. So this is an example of our current project status map. This is actually showing the different products. There's a different map that you can click on that actually shows whether they're being, when they're coming up for construction, when they're on the schedule to start, and when they've been completed. This one, you can see that we've got the residential on here. You can see where I talked about Ross and 26th and Colter. But we also show where we're doing some work on, sorry, Washington and 34th and 34th over by Cap Rock. Those are the projects that you previously approved for our 2021 summer street maintenance program. With that being said, that's the end of my presentation. I didn't know if you had any questions or concerns.
Yes, Mayor, this might be for the city manager or for Floyd, I'm not sure. But what are the plans for keeping us on schedule for this particular project?
We've got Floyd, but we have had a lot of conversation about, you know, as we do every year with what steps we're going to take to make sure that we can work productively with the chosen contractor to make sure we're on schedule and the quality is what it's, you know, supposed to be. That is what's scoped out in the project scope. So we're going to, you know, we're going to be working through all the typical things, weekly reports through Davis Bacon and other things, and frequent patient meetings with them. But Floyd, walk us through some of the details there.
Yes, Councilmember Powell and Mayor and counsel. There are a number of tools within the contract for us to maintain coordination with that. And we look forward to working with the contractor on this project, especially in relation to Davis Bacon is one option within that. But then the coordination of that timing of milling and paving is going to be coordinated within some additional expectations within the contract. So this is a contractual issue that we've looked at internally to make improvements in our coordination component. And then working with our design staff, having better coordination with our inspection staff, we anticipate this project will go very well.
And I would say, and we know that this, and the public's going to be watching very closely to make sure that we're delivering as we promised. So we'll work in a very positive way with our contracting partner to make sure that we're providing the quality that everyone expects and that we're getting it done on time.
Thank you all.
Mayor, following up on the previous discussions on Prop Two and wrapping those projects up, what is the timeframe for completion on the remaining projects that were identified with Prop One? How far out are we on that timeline?
Floyd?
Yes, Councilmember, we have that plan in place where we issued the debt, the remaining debt for all the Proposition One. And those are all scheduled to be completed over the next three summers. So you're going to see construction projects coming out late this summer. We have a number of design projects in the works to come forward. And this was all coordinated with that discussion earlier about putting the priority in place for the facility's construction to make sure that those move forward timely. But remember, in the original five-year CIP plan that was submitted with the bond, there were five years estimated before we issued all the debt. So incrementally, we issued the debt. So we just completed that process of that final issuance. We have all those projects either coming to you for construction contracts or in design, whether that's in-house under Kyle Snyder-Gon and his team's engineering design or external design. And you will see all those construction contracts awarded over this summer, next summer, and the following summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Floyd. Anybody else? Questions for Matt or anybody else on the team? Okay, do we have a motion with regard to awarding this project?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the award of the construction contract for the fiscal year 2021 for milling and overlay of various streets, which is associated with the Community Investment Program Proposition One to L.A. Fuller and Sons Construction Limited in the amount of $2,084,695.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer. Any further questions or discussion about the motion? Okay, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that passes with the 5-0 vote. And the last item on our agenda is Item 3C, which is a discussion and consideration of a sale of real property located at Pullman Road and Southeast 3rd Avenue. And Mr. City Manager, it looks like AEDC is the presenter on that item. Is that correct?
We've got Kevin Carter, President and CEO of AEDC, here to present the item. Kevin?
Thank you, Jared. Mayor, counsel, this item would authorize the AEDC to execute a contract and all necessary documents for the sale of approximately 46.92 acres of land located at Pullman Road and Southeast 3rd Street to Texas Cobal Limited. Texas Cobal Limited has previously purchased, on two occasions, 12 acres in total in this area to construct the Good Dog Pet Ranch. They want to further develop that area. The tract of land, as you can see on the map, is the 44.5 acres and 2.34 acres in the bottom of the picture. We purchased that 400 acres previously back in early 2000s. We, we purchased that 400 acres previously back in early, early 2000s. There's about 450 acres there. That last 45 or 46 acres that Texas Cobal wants to purchase, that would be the last that we would develop ourselves out of that piece of property. And so we think this is a good deal. Texas Cobal has already put in the Good Deck, the Good Dog Pet Spa and Ranch. And we feel that they will further develop that faster than we would. So we've settled on a price of $4,700 an acre. The sale price would be for $220,524 plus closing cost and the related expenses in the close of that land. The AEDC board voted yesterday, April 26th, on a 5-0 vote to approve the sale of the land.
Okay. Counsel, questions? None? Kevin, how did y'all arrive at that appraised value? Did you use an appraiser?
We did not use an appraiser. There, there were, there weren't, we did some, some simulated comps in that area based on some property that had sold, but most of that, there just wasn't any good comps on, on the sale of the land. And we purchased that land for a little bit over $2,500 an acre on average for the whole 500 acres. With this portion probably being, would, would have been, if you'd have bought it separately, would have been the cheapest in that just because it's, it's landlocked because of the railroad to the north and Southeast 3rd to the south. We did some adjusted comps and the adjusted comps are in line with that price of $4,700 an acre.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And in negotiating, did y'all negotiate back and forth with them a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. We started out at about $4,000 an acre and ended at 4,700.
Okay, any other questions, counsel? Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have a motion on this sale?
Yes, Mayor, I move to authorize the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation to execute a contract and all necessary documents for the, for the sale of approximately 46.92 acres of land located at Pullman Road and Southeast 3rd Avenue in Amarillo, Texas to Texas Cobal Limited in the amount of $220,524 plus closing costs and related expenses.
Second.
It moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve the sale of this land and the contract underlying it. Any questions or discussion from the counsel about the motion? Okay, hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, I see five, that passes with the 5-0 vote.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Thank you, Kevin. That's the last item on our agenda today, counsel. So I appreciate your time today, appreciate the staff and all the work that they did to work these items. And have a great rest of your Tuesday. We'll see you next time in person. We adjourned.